Okay, we're all here. We're missing Dr. Smith this evening. Good evening to everyone and everyone here and at home. We have a very packed agenda and a packed room this evening. I even saw an agenda this evening that was pretty crowded though. So I will proceed with our technical legion if you'll all rise please.
... of the United States of America. In the two beautiful hour, which stands on a nation under God, in a visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Dr. Juan, could you announce our exec session, please?
Certainly, yes. The Board conducted three executive sessions. There was an executive session on July 16th to discuss personnel and legal issues. There was an executive session on August 5th to discuss legal issues. There was an executive session immediately prior to this meeting tonight, August 9th, to discuss personnel, legal and real property issues.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're gonna, as a point of interest, we're going to address an issue that has been talked about a lot in our meetings, and I see how our people signed in. So we are going to have a discussion about the item 4A under the superintendent's report before visitor comments, and then we'll have visitor comments and then go on with the rest of the meeting after that. So, Dr. Muslin.
Yes, thank you, President beside, thank you. So, I am recommending to the Board that we look to discontinue the services with Dr. Allen, not acting any further on the current DEI initiative before further recommendations are made by the next superintendent, and that the appropriate public input be obtained by the next superintendent before recommendations are made for a new DEI initiative. From what I'm seeing, from a report to... to all the information that I have, I think this is in best interest of the district. When a new administrator, when a new chief of schools comes on board, they should not be saddled with an initiative from a past administration. So I ask you to look into that, discuss it, and the after-public comment, if you see so fit, take a vote on it. You need it?
Thank you. Would anyone like to start the discussion on that?
I'll go ahead. Being one of the Board members that did vote for this back in June of last year, it became fairly clear as the survey was yielded and that it was going to lack any scientific results that we can make decisions, being that it was an open survey and we could respond to this many times, and a whole host of other issues with just that alone. And also, a number of questions that have come up along the way regarding Dr. Allen and a number of questions that will not be answered. So I think that doing education around... having an approach that everyone is included, and ultimately, everyone is on the same cutting field, is something I think we can all bring up. Unfortunately, this initiative, especially in the last number of months, has not had any chance of being successful, and we should have walked away from it a long time ago. But we were committed to doing what we feel is the right thing, but at this time, that initiative, that individual, Dr. Allen, is not the right person or is this the right initiative to continue forward. I think we really need to step back and, with a new look and a lot of perspective, approach it in a very different way.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ms. Gimmick, for sure. Dr. Allen did what we had contracted him to do, and so now we're done. And I agree with Dr. Muslin to absolutely let our new superintendent drive the ship.
Kyle, I'm sorry, he mentioned something. He is fully compensated for everything that he did, and I want to make sure the Board understands that, that we hold Dr. Allen nothing. He was compensated for two things, the report and a sketch of a proof letter, and both of those were done, and we're... I think that was to the tune of, kind of held me, four thousand?
I think that's an important clarification, that we only paid for, we need to set an action plan, not for the training, which was obviously never delivered. So, even though that was the amount of the entire agreement, we only paid for a small portion of the cost.
Anyone else?
Actually, I thought the grant you just looked at was...
It was scheduled money, yeah?
Yeah. Also, I am in favor of this going forward, without Dr. Allen, though I think it's a good move. And my new superintendent will lead and act accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to add my support as well for moving on with fresh new start new superintendent and going about this in a different manner, going to be more certainly involving input from our community as well as additional stakeholders.
Thank you.
Ms. Gimmick? Thank you. I'd just like to add that I think what's really encouraging about this is, we obviously are prone to have a great community conversation, and community members are obviously very interested in this topic, and I'm sure that will result in many different portions of our community to be representative, many more than we have tapped into or could have tapped into before this issue came up in such a robust manner. And I think it's great that we have a new leadership that can make a fresh start at taking a look at this issue and leading in a way that best suits that individual's style and the style of the district and what has since come to light. And our needs assessment, we can almost restart because we've obviously discovered we have different needs that we perhaps thought wasn't missed. So I think it's encouraging, it'll be a robust conversation, and I look forward to Dr. Muslin leading it on.
Thank you. Mr. Dimmick, I think you wanted to speak?
Sure, thanks. First, my question is, I just want to clarify that, are we gonna have the recital? Is that gonna be read at some point this evening?
That's after, after, yeah. We're just addressing 4A right now.
And I just wanted to be able to reference it, knowing it's gonna be read at some point. So, I mean, I think that recital covers well, I think this was an ill-conceived program from the beginning. I voted against it for that reason. I had a number of questions about it, and they weren't answered. As they've been answered, I've been disappointed to learn that it was worse than what I thought. I am very concerned about the recency of the critical race theory within Dr. Allen's proposal, which I continue to believe if there's only six quick notes and one or two of them have it, that to me indicates that that was a large part of what was intended. So, I wholeheartedly support ending, or certainly not going forward with a next step with Dr. Allen, but I don't think, you know, I think we should reflect on that and consider it as we do move forward, and to the extent that we move forward, you know, it's been said, and I think it's true, we need to have the community, you know, I don't know why we ever had to go to North Carolina or Texas or wherever, it seems to me that this is something that, making sure that every student feels that they belong at Southern Lehigh is what I am certain everyone sitting here tonight wants to ensure, and I'm certain every Board member here wants to ensure, I'm sure it's what our new superintendent wants to ensure, it's what I want to ensure. But as we've all learned over the last number of months, there's a whole lot of other stuff floating in and around this particular topic, in my opinion. And I think it's critical that we get it right this time, and we get it right by making sure it's a program that reflects the values of Southern Lehigh, and it's a program to make sure that everyone feels that they belong. I have continued concerns about equity, and what that definition even means. It means something different than probably almost everyone in this room, because there's no real set definition of it, but I have some concerns about some of the equity definitions that I've heard. And so to say that we want to go forward and continue with a diversity, equity, and inclusion program, I don't know that I'm on board for that, because I don't know what that means. I prefer to talk about making sure that people are proud of their community, making sure that they are, they feel that they belong in school, that they're supported, that everyone feels that they're a part of this community and this school industry. I'm 100% for that. But I don't think what this does is anything like that. I'm glad it's ended, and I hope going forward that we can include as many people as we can to make sure that we do. Look, we got issues, every school has issues, and we gotta address those issues. But I think we need to take a good look at it and figure out a really good program to make sure everyone feel that they belong. I think if we do that, we'll have enough support and we'll stop having an issue that's divided this community. I mean, when you bring something in that just splits the community in half, it seems to me that that in itself was a poor idea. So it's incumbent upon us as a Board and also you folks in the community to make sure we get this next one right going forward, and I hope the community remains engaged. But I am very thankful to see this particular chapter of it come to an end. Thank you.
I just really quickly wanted to add to that. Part of moving forward with this process is understanding that the term diversity, equity, and inclusion in and of itself does not mean critical race theory.
We are gonna have an orderly meeting, and if people are not able to, will be conducting an orderly meeting, we will ask people to leave. Everybody will have a chance to speak, the Board certainly has their right to speak as well. Please, please maintain order.
I certainly have already stated that I'm not in support of maintaining a connection to Dr. Allen for obvious reasons. That doesn't mean that the diversity, equity, and inclusion plan means critical race theory. It doesn't. It's something that is used in offices nationwide, it's used in hospital networks. And I think that it is clear based on what I'm hearing now, that we need something, because just the term...
Please do not interrupt the Board.
Just the use of the words leads to such a response, which is, which is heartening to me. I do believe that what's done was clearly not done right. You know, that's obvious, right, to everyone who's here, everyone who's in the community that I've spoken to, and truly, there are a lot of people who feel the same as what I am stating, who are afraid to come to these meetings. They're afraid to speak up in front of some of you. That's not a good thing. You know, we're all, we're all members of the same community. We see each other at games, we see each other at band concerts, at musicals, and I'm not the enemy, just because I know that other districts are utilizing and workplaces are looking at DEI initiatives, it doesn't mean it's critical race theory. You have to keep the two distinct. They're not equivalent, that's all I'm saying. I'm not supporting, and the thing is, you can't say that this was a debate on critical race theory. It wasn't. In order to have a debate, you need to have a side that is for critical race theory, and you need to have a side that is against it. We clearly have individuals that are against critical race theory, but you never have anyone on the Board, in the administration, or in the community up here at any point advocating for critical race theory. That's all.
That's a flat out lie.
I'm just gonna say, I agree with much of what everybody else on the Board has said, and I think it's unfortunate that we can unanimously as a Board, and we, you know, have to take a position on this, we recognize the concerns and the issues that have, you know, we have, that we'll be talking about later in terms of the agreement, you know, everybody collectively in this community should have the same goals that Mr. Dimmick was speaking to, but again, you know, if we can't even have a conversation in the community, you know, which is the goal of this, right? The goal is to turn the page, right? We're gonna, and to Dr. Sherry's point, you know, deciding to discontinue with this because of the variety of issues that are associated with the breakup with Dr. Allen does not mean that we are closing the book on moving forward with, and I'm sorry, but you can't say the words diversity and equity without inclusion, or inclusion without people attacking the current problem. You know, and that's why we need to have these community discussions, and, you know, which will be done under the new superintendent, under his leadership. We are excited to be able to, you know, welcome a new superintendent, right? And I think that we need to be able to turn the pages. There are people in the community who have reached out, who said, "I am afraid to come. I don't want to speak up." I've seen, you know, people come up and speak one after another, you know, against these initiatives, and I've seen students of color and people of color who are afraid to speak up. That's not what we want as a community to have. People should not be afraid.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance? I know, I would like to share. Mike, David, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to add to that element of fear, just to, there are individuals in this community who are afraid to come, not just to a board meeting, not just to a Monday night, they're afraid to express themselves and their individuality, their opinions, at, as Dr. Sherry referenced, musical events and ball games and in our community. There's a fear, and there are two ways, as a community, we can handle that fear. As I see it, we as community members can either say to ourselves, "Gosh, that is not how I'm gonna be perceived as a community or community member, and what can I do to change that?" Because I don't think that is anyone's intent in this audience. I do not think, I think everyone here tonight is here because they are here to advocate behavior for the best interest of our kids and our community, and that is a strength. And I think that what we can say to ourselves is, "Gosh, if that is what I'm hearing, I do not want that to be the perception, and what can I do to help that not be the perception going forward?" That is all. So if we look at this with an open mind, if that's the perception, I don't want it to be that way, and how can we work together to not have that feeling of resentment? I think we're setting ourselves up for success, but I think we continue to argue about whether or not we are or are not intimidating each other, it's just not the case. That's all.
I will just add, at this point, I don't know whether it's, you know, my, what I'm admitting to my ignorance, but I will say, when we proved this back in June, I didn't know critical race theory. I learned about it from being exposed to it from here, and I can say honestly that as what I approved and what I was looking for when I heard Dr. Allen speak was, I was voting for education curriculum for our students and staff to just simply understand that everybody has a story, and that, you know, the story is unique to each person and to their personal perspectives, and how do we empathetically, you know, listen to that? And those experiences influence the students, the teachers, our staff, and how they react to certain situations and how they, so all I'm thinking for DEI is that it is an understanding of a story of everybody coming with a difference, and those differences, if we can learn to listen and to hear, we learn. And that is what I had proved when I heard Dr. Allen speak in June. That is exactly what I had, what I heard. I did not, I admit it, I did not know what critical race theory was, and that is not, as he said before, over and over here, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about everybody having a story and what that means for their experiences when they're sitting in the classroom, when they're sitting in an audience like this, when we're sitting up here, and we're all, it's empty, and learning to understand, and when we understand, we can learn from each other and come together as a community, which is what I, which is what I hope for. I think that's, is that it? Okay, so we are going to move on to public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments are to provide input to the Board and items that are before us to vote. Speakers must be district residents and sign in. Because this is a business meeting, there will be no response period from the superintendent or Board. We ask that you refrain from offensive language and stick to the three minutes, especially because we have a very long list. Thank you. The first person I have signed up is Bill Schindler.
We will hear more from the Board tonight about former superintendents, and she's alleged to have done a number of things that violated Board policies and applicable law, you saw that in the resolutions. It appears that the Board is beginning to take appropriate action to get upon these issues, for this they should be commended. The Board's inquiry should be conducted with all due haste, and the Board should commit to transparency in these matters and share the results of the inquiry with the public as soon as possible. Ms. Edison had an agenda, and she was willing to hide things from this Board and mislead the public beginning of the year. Among her goals was to train our teachers and staff, and in her approach to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that was based and driven on critical race theory. That approach takes as a given that racism permeates every aspect of our society, ascribes every difference and outcome to systemic racism, and divides our students based on nothing more than the color of their skin, labeling some as oppressors and some as oppressed. In an email from Dr. Edison, excuse me, to Dr. Allen dated June 19, 2020, email's over there, that's three days before the proposal was presented to this Board, Ms. Edison told Dr. Allen, and I quote, "A significant percentage of our student body was either passively or outwardly exhibiting racist and biased behavior." She wasn't trying to determine whether we had a problem, she had already decided to do it, and she had judged our students in her own words to be racist. This certainly explains why the proposal from the very start included training and curriculum changes. This was a corrupt process from the beginning, and the outcome was predetermined because of Dr. Edison's own bias. My wife and I objected Dr. Edison had Dr. Allen's work on DEI because it is based on a cynical device of ideology at its very core. Our objection is specific, it's not general. You can be for understanding and tolerance, but you can be against this sort of DEI approach. People who are expressing concern here are not concerned about diversity. They're for treating people as individuals regardless of race. We don't see in the proposals tonight an affirmative rejection from this Board of the notion that it's ever acceptable to segregate our students into oppressor and oppressed and ascribe moral guilt. We should hear that from the Board, and I think we've heard that from many of you tonight in your comments. Thank you. We're compelled to ask though, this agreement with Dr. Allen was out there for 14 months, where does each Board member stand on this issue? Is it ever okay to slaughter our students by race and ascribe guilt? It should be an act unto the heart. We very much so appreciate those answers. Thank you.
The last person, you can leave, Monica Schindler?
Hi, good evening, thank you very much. I have a friend whose skin, I'm sorry, let me start over. I have a friend whose child has dark skin, and a couple of his classmates over the course of this year have used a horrible racial epithet towards him numerous times, and he got no meaningful help. Individual acts of racism or harassment are absolutely non-acceptable, and Southern Lehigh has policies against unlawful harassment, discrimination, and bullying, but only if they're helpful, if they're enforced. As an educator myself, not to mention a mother of two, I know well that kids make mistakes, and they have to be taught what is acceptable and what is not. Our job is to civilize them. Part of that is helping them to understand what their actions are and that they have consequences for both themselves and for others. So I urge parents to talk to their kids regularly about tolerance and understanding, to help them understand that words can wound and make life miserable for other kids. Teach them to treat others how they would want to be treated, and a bit of the golden rule would serve us all well, adults included. We're going to need to have uncomfortable conversations, we need to listen to each other and others' perspectives. My husband and I fully support education and training on cultural, ethnic, historical diversity and efforts to increase tolerance and understanding. We have even directed the Board to fair the Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism as a resource. Our approach should be pro-human, not any anti-particular race. We should never assign historical or moral guilt to children for the sin of being born of a particular color. We must reaffirm the core principles of the Civil Rights Movement, which recognize the humanity and dignity of each person. We must not think in terms of collective groups. History has shown us where that leads. Of course, we should teach the history of our country and of the world with all the horrors and the cruelties, poof, that we have inflicted upon one another over the millennia. This is the only way that we can remember the mistakes of those that came before us and to learn from them. But we also can't lose sight of the fact that while people have always been deeply flawed, we have strived over time, and I believe in this country in particular, to be better and do better and to bring liberty and prosperity to more and more people, regardless of where they started out or what they look like. This Board must ensure that the personal views of one superintendent or a director of curriculum or an administrator do not become unwritten school policy or influence our curriculum without oversight from this Board and from our public. This is particularly true when there's controversial, disputed, or divisive topics that are in play. Our schools need to focus on helping our students meet and exceed academic standards, providing additional help to individual students who need it.
Schindler, you're over the three minutes.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, thank you, I'm almost done. And let's not indoctrinate our teachers or students on particular political viewpoints. And thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for all of your work. And thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for all of your work.
Good evening, I'm here to provide some background. Over the past year, several parents and community members have been monitoring the diversity critical race theory programs school districts have attempted to implement since June 2020 school board vote. I'll just say, we have been successful in stopping this anti-American agenda. To provide some background on August 2020 through right to now, I requested all communications between the school district administration and the diversity contractor Joseph Allen took place prior to the school board vote. I was denied this information based on a right-to-know law exception. On June 10, 2021, a year forward, I submitted the same request and was denied twice. On appeal to the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records, the school district had another chance and denied me a fourth time of these communications. It was not until the state ruled in my favor on July 14, 2021, that I was provided some of all communications I requested, and I'm still waiting on all communications. From the communications I received, it is evident that an engineered false narrative drove this CRT program. Rewinding back to August and September 2020, I wrote to express serious concern and questioned board members and Kathleen Edison about this highly questionable program, only to receive vague or in some cases, no response. Then after gathering critical information for right to now, on December 1, 2020, I had sent the school board an eight-page letter with concerns, facts, and reasons why they should not implement this program. The reply was, "We are moving forward with this program." If you have not read the email communications I just mentioned, I was asking for, I suggest you do. You will realize that this program never should have been approved and never should be. Like the diversity program, you are now looking on two critical matters in haste: the hiring of a law firm to investigate the diversity program and the hiring of a new superintendent. I am against seeing red flags, as I do not understand the need to rush these important decisions. To those who will investigate, I am expecting a deep thorough investigation going back to 2017 into all plans, documents, communications between the internal administration and external parties, and the analysis of financial bidding and funding processes, all alleged incidents and discipline involving racism, the U.S. Department of Education and American Institute for Research involvement, and all other parties to ensure that any contrived or illegal activities that may have taken place is uncovered in due process of the law applied. It appears to our people who are doing what they want-
Ms. Yeh, your three minutes is up. If you could just wrap it up, please.
...self-interest with our tax dollars. We are now going to make sure our money is spent wisely and appropriately for the benefit of the children. I think we need to go out and, on November 4th, and elect people who are willing to run for the governor.
During the Senate Educational Committee meeting on August 6th, we learned that school districts cannot legally mandate masks. A few weeks ago, you mandated masks on our school buses. Myself, along with other conservative parents in districts in southern areas have retained counsel. On July 27th, our attorney Chadwick Snee from the Law Office of Tucker Hall sent me a letter in response to it. It stated that CDC does not have the power to regulate any actions in current entirely, but in Zink State and the CDC lax jurisdiction to decide whether students can wear face masks while running school buses. It has not, as of two days ago, responded to our attorney. We are respectfully asking that you make masks optional on school buses again without a statewide emergency and the universal masking order lifting having a legal authority for these mandates. Senator Scott Martin clearly stated that if schools decide to implement mandates for face covering, they are opening themselves up to potential litigation. I'm a member of a nonprofit organization, Freedom for the Choice of Lehigh Valley and Lehigh Valley, and our dream state is to see that putting masks on children's childhoods. Children are very low risk for serious illness or death from COVID. Children aged five to 14 are seven times more likely to die from the flu and COVID. In Pennsylvania, there were zero COVID deaths in children less than 15 years old. Hazards from masking any child, our social skill development issues, children losing their identity, difficulty breathing, headaches, fatigue, infections, wet mask issues, and masks actually don't work after 20 minutes because of moisture. Our children's mental health matters. I have two young boys in the district, and I will not submit them to another year of health with masks. Because of forced masks, my boys have headaches, fatigue, behavior, and concentration issues. I had to hire a retired teacher to tutor my oldest son, or he would have mostly failed most of fourth grade. Please give our children their deeply needed sense of morality back. All we're asking for is the option to choose. As school board officials that are elected by the taxpayer and citizens of Southern Lehigh, your role is to oversee and approve the proposed policies in educational and fiscal operations of our district. None of you have been elected to decide public health policies under your children. Please keep in mind that if you try to force our children back into masks, based on recommendations from the CDC or the PA Department of Health, you will be hearing from our attorneys concerning your lack of licensure and authority to provide and enforce recommended medical interventions. You will be held responsible and liable for your decisions. Please make masks optional on our school buses and allow us, the parents, to make those medical decisions for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Diebel.
Thank you. Paul Diebel, I have two children in the district, one in grade six, two in grade 11. I'd like to address two issues regarding masking and helping safety plan those passed in the last meeting. As Ms. Ambush just mentioned, we should have received the letter from Attorney Chadwick Snee at Turner Hall, which presented the legal clarification that the CDC mandate only applies to interstate and international transportation, and that they do not have jurisdiction over travel entirely within the state, as would be the case for our buses. Therefore, the decision to require masking on our school buses falls solely on the school district, it is not governed by the CDC. Since there's no mask mandate in Pennsylvania or in Lehigh County, my administration sent out a correction email immediately to inform the community that masking is not required by any government agency on school buses. Second, regarding this section on masking, in the health and safety plan, the plan notes the state's universal masking order has expired, and masks are no longer required. It goes on to note that updates in CDC recommendations or state or local orders may result in modifications to the policy. My concern with this is the possibility of last minute changes to the policy based on conflicting and inconsistent information. Last week, Governor Wilson stated there will not be a new mask mandate in Pennsylvania. While the CDC did not issue a mandate, it issued guidance suggesting masking be required in high transmission areas. Yet President Biden, speaking after his recent visit here in the country, stated, quote, "If you notice, a lot of places, people don't have to wear masks. Places where people have gotten vaccinated, where they have a high vaccination rate, people do not have to wear masks at all. Like some of you were with me yesterday when I was up in Lehigh Valley, didn't have to wear a mask there," end of quote. Reviewing the presentation on COVID that is included in today's agenda, it will seem that Lehigh County has 82% of the eligible population having received at least one dose of vaccine, well above the 70% goal set by the CDC. Since there are no federal or state mandates at the moment, the decision is in your hands, in our hands. Our community has done well, and does not need to revert to masking requirements. Parents are concerned with last minute changes to the plan, as we saw last year with the decision to go fully virtual the week before classes started. If this board makes a decision to require masking, we'll see a lot of families pull their children out to charter schools, causing undue stress on the kids, a loss of tax revenue for the school, and possible job losses for our teachers and staff. We need a commitment that barring any overriding federal or state mandates, that our school will be mask optional for the duration of the 2122 school year, and I ask the board to put forward a motion to that effect. Thank you.
I just want to say that I feel that we have taken the control from the parents in teaching our children, in growing our children. I feel that the board has taken on a bit more than what is actually your right to our children. And I feel like we need to get back to the parents. You have education on your plate, and that's enough. I feel that our children should not have to go through a year that they did last year. I understand that that's not in your hands, that's not your fault. But I do believe that the way that it was handled, given maybe a little bit more thought, may have been handled a different way. I do understand that there is a lot of the same beliefs on this board, and as you can see, there's a lot of people in this room that feel otherwise. So I would please, please break them out. The parents in this room, the children that go to this school, and come to some understanding that we all do work the same thing. We really do. Whether it's critical race theory, whether it's our children being taught certain things, we all want our children to be kind. We all want our children to be healthy. We all are taking different approaches to that. And I would like to see us try and unite a little bit more on that front. I agree with what you've said before, in that the arguments fighting back and forth, right? There's a different way to do this. And if it can just be not jammed down our throats, that would be a little bit better. If we would have a little bit more of a say in what our children are being taught, if the surveys that come out, obviously you're addressing that, aren't so one-sided and don't represent the school district. Everything that we hold dear in this community is because we've chosen to grow our children here. We saw something in this school district. That's why we're here. But if the school district starts to turn a different route than what we anticipated growing our children in, I will be taking my children out.
Good evening. It's interesting to me that you guys all sit up here, you had a conversation, you made that vote a year and a half ago, and now every one of you has a different, has something else to say about it. We have been fighting for over a year, telling you that there's issues. We, the community, brought the CRT and Ms. Edison's issues in your face. We're the ones who did the homework. We're the ones who did the background. We did it all. It was your job. Your job, your lack of due diligence, your lack of doing any kind of background at all. Nobody paid attention, just like some of you are paying attention now. Now, you sat up here, I'm going to say you may, and you had the audacity with your pompous, elitist attitude to tell us we didn't know what we were talking about. I didn't first-
If you have a battle point to make, it should stand on its own merits. Please don't insult board members.
I didn't- You had the audacity to criticize all of us and tell us we didn't know what we were talking about, when in all, all intents and purposes, we knew more than you, which is unacceptable. That's your job, just like you're hiring a new guy. And if you look up Abington's website on DEI, it's the same thing we're just fighting for. Google it. It's not that hard. I find out about it like 20 minutes before the meeting, and it's all the same stuff. It's not okay. It's not okay at all. And on top of it, when I did the data analysis on this report for Allen, you have a major problem with your student ratio to disciplinary in the eighth grade. Eighth grade started 2016. There's a huge, huge problem, and it's only eighth grade, and it only started in 2016. 25% of all disciplinary actions are eighth grade. You have 250-ish students in that class that year. There was 1,200 disciplinary actions. 1,200 out of 200 students.
Miss Scott, maybe you're at three minutes.
Thank you.
I was a member of this board of 2018, served with Chadwick. I would say to the folks who are here tonight, you saw an excellent example in Chadwick tonight, of a critical thinker who questions things the way the board should question things, the way six of you never question things, the way six of you do whatever the superintendent wants to do, whatever some expert tells you to do, and then tries to cover your tracks afterwards by playing it, oh, this is what we thought would happen all the time. You're asleep at the wheel, you've been asleep at the wheel. Even tonight, when you said we're bringing in a new superintendent, what you said was, "He'll tell us what to do." No, he won't. You're the board. You set the strategic direction for this school district. If you don't understand that, you should resign right now. In fact, most of you should resign. And I said, that's the questions to be answered in this meeting. It's disgraceful to answer, because we always answer them while I was at the board, because we care about the community and respect them. And just to demonstrate how you can't get anything right. When people spoke from over there, you put the clock behind you so they can't see it. Not that I speak here, the clock's behind me and I can't see it. Can you get anything right? So they asked for questions to be answered. Six of you, tabled. "Oh, we'll work on it." The next meeting was brought up again. No action. Never any action, because you are opaque. You care nothing about the community, you care nothing about what the community thinks. You have the gall, if you interrupted someone for saying something about people. You point to people and tell people that they have fear and everything else, like they're not as smart as you are. That's disgusting. You want to talk about fear? Fear is people who speak against CRT and get fired by their employers. The real danger in this community today is speaking out against these sayings and being canceled and being fired. Own it. It was yours, and it was disgraceful. You had an expert brought in, and expert. I went online, I found nothing of this expert. I checked citation databases. You know what that is? You're a librarian, right? Citation database? No citations. No work cited by experts, alarums. Also, during this election, our solicitors sent out a letter warning the former Biden candidates not to use a spark of love. He got a responsible lawyer, and then he disappeared. How'd that happen? Who told him to send out a letter to candidates in the midst of an election trying to intimidate them and removing their yard signs and literature? How'd that happen? The Larson Group that you've appointed to look into this DEI fiasco that you all created should also be tasked with finding out what happened here. How did the letter go out to candidates before an election, telling them to turn around and say, "No, I'm not going to do that"? Just another embarrassing step for you, just like your embarrassing step, telling someone to be quiet. You have no authority in running a meeting with that man. You were not elected officially. You were not the president of the board. So shut up.
The next one is Mr. Tom Lanning, but I will say that we can't keep having this happen. Like this can't be how we, how we treat each other, how the community feels.
We're not treating everybody as happy to respond to the first meeting. Under the sunshine act in the state of Pennsylvania, we all have a right to ask the question.
You also have a right to sign the name on the board, Chief Tom.
Yeah, I do.
Well, I guess I would agree with Mr. Martin, you know, the main thing is that you had an opportunity to vote and do things with this CRT program. You almost put it in. It was like the guy was a DEI. You're now going to go and possibly come back again and group with it again. And I'm not sure you deserve a chance at this. Really, I think, you know, a lot of you folks like to re, you know, look in the mirror and figure out whether or not you're really worthy of standing in this board. That's all I have. I just wanted to say that it's embarrassing, really, when this happens, you know, that we have to disappoint the board with this criticism of the CRT program in place. Thank you very much.
It's tricky back there. Good evening. My name is Melissa Torba, and I am a Southern Lehigh resident for the past 18 years. My family lives here. We're at Valley Bourne and raised. We, our daughter attends Hopewell Elementary. Thank you, Hopewell. There's been quite a bit of dialogue about CRT, critical race theory, and DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion. For a moment, we should not focus on the different interpretations, different individuals have of the terms CRT, DEI, or any other acronyms. Instead, let's focus on some basic principles. I believe that everyone wants their own children, their friends' children, their neighbors' children, to be treated fairly with respect. Basic awareness of cultural differences and sensitivity to diverse backgrounds by our faculty and staff should be viewed as essential to providing an inclusive learning environment for all students. As for history, we should all be proud of our nation's accomplishments. And every student should be instilled with that pride. At the same time, we should also be transparent in teaching historical events with the understanding that nobody should be ashamed or feel guilty of history. It's our responsibility to ensure our staff and teachers have the tools they need to be, to be, to be more relatable to their students. Our constant goal should be to foster better student outcomes, continue to inspire our kids academically, socially, emotionally, and to prepare our students to succeed in a global society. My experience, our community values high-quality education. Therefore, we should all support and provide our staff and our teachers with the resources they need in this ever-evolving industry of public education. Public education is the cornerstone of America. We're one country who offers free education. Thank you. I'm sorry I beeped.
You're still in time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Eighteen, eighteen years ago, my husband Dave and I moved to this community because of the president's great reputation and outstanding school judgment. When our first order started kindergarten at Hopewell, we immediately knew and saw how Southern Lehigh's reputation proceeded itself. We were ecstatic to be part of the school district. I had wonderful opportunities to volunteer at all of the schools, be P T T Vice President, substitute cafeteria worker in all of the schools, and Dave and I co-served Southern Lehigh youth softball for seven years. Through these experiences throughout the past seven years, I was able to know many teachers, staff, principals, vice principals, community members, and they were amazing, caring, kind-hearted, respectful, and supportive of the students and each other. I understood why they were all smart and proud. We had full trust in our Southern Lehigh administration and school board, and were smart and proud until August of 2019. We were deceived as the pandemic brought forth our true colors. First, the Southern Lehigh administration and current school board ignored the cries of our community. The same is true that parents know what is best for their children. There were parents who wanted their children in school full-time in August of 2019. Instead, it was all virtual, which was detrimental psychologically, mentally, and emotionally to children. The school only looked at the COVID virus issue instead of the entire well-being of the children. Then came the avoidance lies and lack of transparency by both Mrs. Edison and the current school board. Dr. Allen's proposal was secretly brought up at a school board meeting during crisis and lockdown. The flat-out lies to the community from Mrs. Edison in school board meetings and community emails that thirsty ethno-ine inclusion, which is based on critical race theory, was not going to be part of the curriculum, when that was her plan all along, as was stated in her email communications with Dr. Allen, whom by the way, she had a prior relationship, which is certainly a violation of Southern Lehigh. The school board failed again to listen to the community members repeatedly telling them that Dr. Allen's proposal, which is based on critical race theory, was not. Even thinking for a second that the Southern Lehigh teachers created, supported, or maintained systemic racism within our schools is obscene and preposterous. All the Southern Lehigh teachers are amazing, and in my opinion, were undermined by Edison and the school board. Dave and I trust our kids with all the teachers here at Southern Lehigh. Thirdly, when schools were given the authority to mandate masks or make this optional, they continued to mask our children all day again, ignoring the cries of children and parents who didn't want their children to be masked. With the lack of transparency, outright lies, deceit, and avoidance, the Southern Lehigh administration and the school board seriously let down the Southern Lehigh children, teachers, and community. Well, we're watching now. You have our attention. We will be smart and proud again, and community members will make sure that the students have an environment conducive to success and mask optional.
Thank you for having me. I would like the board to call for a vote to make masks wearing optional at school, in sports, and on the bus, regardless of the personal health choices that the students have made. I'm guessing that the members of board, you already have personal convictions about the topics brought up here tonight related to the racial issues and masking vaccine status. But Southern Lehigh does graphics, and the research that I recently read from a local consultant showed that we are just a highly educated, more so than other areas around us, group of parents. And we're not prone to simple misinformation. I urge you to set aside your personal preferences and just hear the passions, please, for focusing on educational basics, leaving the sensitive topics and health decisions up to individual families. There seems to be just such a real anger toward those people who are not vaccinated. And while most around here seem to be, we shouldn't really be talking about the vaccinated or the unvaccinated. Wouldn't it make more sense to talk about the immune versus non-immune? But that's not what we're here to do tonight. So what I really wonder is what you're going to do related to masks, and how you're going to make that decision, when you're going to make that decision. If you're considering making only non-COVID vaccinated children wear masks, if that's something you're considering, please reconsider that. It discredits the effectiveness of the vaccine that we all thought if we got, then we wouldn't have to have our children wear masks. And currently, our children's health information is said to be private, so let's keep it that way. Especially from their peers. If we selectively mask unvaccinated children, that means that we're visually exposing parents' private health choices to all of our children's peers. And that's, that's like wearing the Jewish star on your, the scarlet A. By masking only those unvaccinated, you'll be encouraging segregation, increasing factions, and increasing the likeliness of bullying and social judgments for those reasons. And I don't want my children to make decisions based on being bullied and their fear of their peers and what they're going to think of that. And thirdly, there's a lot, there's laws about being able to exempt from vaccines, and those are the ones that are not, that are approved by the FDA. And we're talking about COVID, which is not currently approved by the FDA. But there's laws that allow for exemptions. And if we single out the children that don't have COVID, then that discounts the medical exemptions and the religious exemptions, and the exemptions that are quoting from Title 28 Chapter 23, 28 PA Code, 23.84. And that we, that people can object on religious grounds or on the basis of strong moral or ethical conviction similar to religiously. So all three vaccines are still under emergency use only. They're not approved by the FDA. Our children should not be questioned about their participation, what is technically still in trial. And the COVID vaccine should not require exemptions to participate in a normal learning environment. Unpredictability, for what to expect, and going back to school is an added stressor for our students.
You're at your three minutes. Take this right off. Thank you.
We see in our students a sense of normalcy and predictability, and consider that wearing masks and testing is segregating them, and that it will instill fear and be a toxic stressor and impede their learning ability. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ellie Forino. I am a driving salesman here at the high school. I currently stay in a squad that's getting under banned, gross codes, blocking scrimmage, but I can recognize them. So I'm here today to share my findings on having a mask meeting here after school. So since the beginning of the coronavirus, I've been trying to speak seriously, as I can. You know, my entire family, even very conscious, we don't want to get vaccinated, deadly disease. And so luckily, I was fortunate enough to be able to get the vaccine. There are people, and we're glad to complain, there's people who cannot get the vaccine. And so I think that we should have a mask meeting in schools to protect these kids, and also to protect the people who are not able to get the vaccine, who are not eligible yet to get the vaccine. I'm sure many of you have kids or family members who are under the age of 12, who they don't have the option yet to get the vaccine, or who have family members who are immunocompromised or for other medical reasons cannot get the vaccine. So even though we have seen that so many people have been getting vaccinated, there is emerging evidence that there is risk of transmitting and getting the virus even if you are vaccinated. So my concern is for the people in our community and the people who are under the age of 12, who cannot get vaccinated. I have two cousins who cannot get vaccinated yet, and one of them is immunocompromised. And she really loves to come to the football games and see me play in the band, and she always loves coming to all the events that me and my brother are involved with compared to school. However, if I'm going to go into school this year and there is not a mask meeting, I'm worried that I will not be able to see you. I don't want to be the reason that her or any of my other family members, who may be vaccinated or cannot get the vaccine, get COVID. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to tell someone if I transmit them the virus because I'm going into school and because I'm pursuing my education. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to tell them when that happens. If we do not have a mask meeting, we are going to have COVID outbreaks that would be inevitable. And so I'm not sure how any of our students are going to be able to deal with that and have to tell the family members, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that you're in the hospital because I wanted to see you. I'm sorry that I completely cut you out from my life because I'm going into school. I'm not sure how to deal with that, and I'm not sure how to deal with going into school and having to come to terms with that, that I could be putting my family at risk because of that.
You're at three minutes, so if you just wrap up. Thank you.
Yes, so I'm in support of a mask meeting. I want to be able to go into school and not feel concerned about my health, with health of people around me or my family. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Lane. I have a daughter entering second grade and a son entering kindergarten. I currently work for a nonprofit called Children Who Read the Initiative. We provide literacy coaching to K degree teachers across the country. For the past seven years, I have worked for the school district of Philadelphia. Based on my experience, I have two points that I would like to make tonight. My first point is around curriculum. The literacy curriculum in Philadelphia is light years ahead of Southern Lehigh. One thing almost all experts agree on is implementing a systematic and explicit phonics program, something that we still don't have. Journeys, the current reading curriculum, is outdated and not nearly rigorous enough for our children. I understand the curriculum review underway, and I look forward to hearing the results. My second point is around diversity, equity, inclusion, and the need to implement it in a timely manner. Last year, my organization adapted our mission statement to focus on DEI work and how to infuse that work into literacy instruction. While this work is ongoing, we have started to see a shift in students discovering their identities as well as teachers planning. Teachers are seeking out opportunities to ask more thought-provoking questions. Just to provide an example, part of the second grade curriculum is reading a book called John Chapman, The Story of Johnny Appleseed. The first line of the text is, it's the 17th of December, and everyone was free. We know that everyone was not free. And so teachers have started crafting questions to get students thinking about those varying perspectives. Whose story is being told? Whose story is not being told? Who has the power here? And then providing supplemental texts to provide additional resources about the same time period in history. This approach allows our students to truly understand our history. When I hear people speak out against incorporating DEI work in schools, I think it comes from a place of the unknown, or maybe fear, a fear that we're going to shame our children, a fear that we're going to teach our children not to love our country. This is not the intent. I've seen it in action, and this is not what happens. My husband went to the United States Day of Liberty. He served in three deployments. You better believe I'm going to teach my kids about the country he and many others defended. We owe it to our children to provide perspective about the world around them, and that includes incorporating DEI work in schools and equipping teachers with the tools and training to deliver it effectively. We need to be on the right side of history. I'm happy to talk to anyone, provide additional resources, books, about this, so we can all learn more together. Thank you so much.
So I'm Justin Sila. I've lived in Southern Lehigh since 2004. I had three kids. Either either of them go through the school district. I am a physician at St. Luke's. I'm the Chair of Medicine for the Network. I've actually been in that role. I've personally taken care of dozens of patients with COVID, and I'm a senior physician who's taken care of literally hundreds of patients with COVID while here in our communities. I will tell you that the COVID numbers are going up. You know, just a few short months ago... You know, just a few short months ago, we were down as a network in eleven hospital networks. We had five, six patients in the entire month with COVID. We're back up into the thirties now. So it's clearly back, it's clearly in the community and it's clearly a problem. The number today was thirty-two, of those thirty-two patients, thirty-one were unvaccinated. So I'm here to ask the board to consider the CDC recommendations and the recommendations in St. Louis, which I believe were masked for six weeks and then reassessed and see what you guys want to think after that and see how people look for reassessed information. I fully respect that the messaging around masking has been confusing, has been conflicting, has been changing. But you know, the thing, these things change as evidence changes. I grew up, I didn't wear a seatbelt when I was, when I was a kid because we didn't have to. When I first came out of med school, we were prescribing hormone replacement for women because that's what we, that's what was felt to be the best thing for women then. Preventing ocococosis and all these things. There's not, evidence changed, we're not doing that anymore. So the evidence around these things is changing. I also recognize that it's probably difficult for especially kids to wear a mask at school. I mean, I certainly don't want to be wearing a mask. But you know, we're in unprecedented times. So I don't know how you can go through and look back at history and see how a group of people, a country, a nation, a species has gone through difficult times without pulling together as a community. And you're going to have to do something to pull together as a community to show, you know, how we get through this together. There's no way to do that without doing something that we don't want to do. Wearing a mask is something I don't want to do. I don't like wearing a mask. So you know, for me and my kids, I chose to send a message around love and that, you know, we're wearing these masks at school so because we love our students, we love our fellow classmates, we love our neighbors and our, and our family and our community and our, and our country. And that's why we're asking people to wear masks to try to keep each other safe. I don't think, I'm not going to get COVID because I'm wearing a mask, but I'm vaccinated and if I'm a carrier, hopefully I won't give to someone else. That's the whole point of wearing masks, so you can be a basic and a carrier. And that's why I wear a mask, so that we can teach that we love each other as community. We're tired of not getting each other safe. That's it. That's all I have to say. Or I want to thank the board for their, for their time in the community. That's probably a thank you drop, I guess.
My name is Clara. I'm a physician at St. Louis. I just wanted to take some of the concepts and advice about, besides what I was giving. My wife is a physician as well. She works at Lehigh County. So we bring the perspective of two net of the largest health networks in the whole area. There are not all facts. A lot of people have been signing CDC data, NIH data, and that is true. But you need to understand, a lot of the epidemic knowledge is fluid. It changes every week. It changes by the rate of infection, disease, the people that have been to the hospital. There's everything in place, all in that. So nothing is data from the CDC and from our already acknowledged at the hospital. North Hampton and Lehigh counties now have substantial diseases activity. That's well known, Dr. Pasailas. We have seen a correlation uptick in hospital admissions over the past week. It's happened. Eighty percent of the isolates of this new disease in the state are Delta variants. We know that it's a more contagious and easy to spread variant that we have. That's what's happening right now. There are emerging data that Delta may cause more serious diseases than other strains as well in children. We're not here to try to change your mind. Please understand that. Your mind is probably all set. That's your choice. Whether you want to be vaccinated or whether you want to vaccinate your children, it's your choice. All we're asking is that we can, we just have some common sense. We've been living in the community for about ten years. I have two children at Southern Lehigh. Can't we all agree that as a community, what we care is that our kid, just to be safe and healthy? I come in this young lady here, I mean, she could have explained it better. This is not trying to be a mask mandate to actually force a mask to your children. We're just trying to make sure you know that we're coming back from a summer. We travel everywhere. There's a good chance that there's a lot of kids that are going to be positive. They have no symptoms and they're going to spread it everywhere. It is true that a kid, very unlikely, is going to get very, very severe disease symptoms. That's true. But the problem is that kid is going to spread it to someone else. The reason that I'm wearing a mask today is just why like Dr. Pasaila said. I'm vaccinated, both those, the first time it was available in the United States, I got vaccinated. I'm wearing a mask because I was seeing patients last ten days. And I'm wearing it because just in case someone gave it to me and I didn't have it.
You're at three minutes.
I want to pass it to you guys. Please, common sense. Let's consider the mask, just what Dr. Pasaila said. Let's reassess in six weeks.
No, Dr. Blanco, no. Okay, moving on to Mr. Michael Engels.
Thank you very much. So my name is Michael Engels. I'm a physician in this community as well as a parent of a Southern Lehigh child. My daughter currently goes to Liberty Bell. I'm also coming to echo some of my colleagues that I continue with today. Since we have a run of all of us in a row right now. But I take care of the population of patients with severe autoimmune diseases that often require heavy immunosuppression. In that patient population, though we do our best we can with vaccination, there is still emerging data that vaccination might be less effective. And they are high, high risk for severe disease and complications. Masks are not to protect necessarily the people who are wearing a mask. Some of my colleagues from the other, from St. Louis had just mentioned they're to protect our community members who might be more susceptible. While children are unlikely, though not impossible, to have severe complications with COVID, they can very easily spread it, especially in children under age twelve who cannot get the vaccine. They can bring this home to their family members, their grandparents too. And elderly people, the vaccine is not as effective, but it is much more deadly. Mask mandates are to protect your neighbors, protect everyone around you. So as the data emerges, as my colleagues have said, this is something that needs to be continuously reevaluated. And it's not a major ask to help protect your more vulnerable neighbors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mike, our charge by this pronouncer is Kwardarsky.
So I'd just like to say that I threw away about half of what we were going to say because I guess the way you guys opened the meeting and what I'm going to call a temporary D door or a rest stop on a highway trip, that's what it feels like. I think a lot of you still are just waiting to continue to implement it. You just don't feel like what we did in the past was right. You know, eight, eight out of nine, if you decided that DEI was a top priority for some reason, not focusing on STEM, not identifying students who were adversely affected by distance learning, so many other truly important issues for our kids. Hope we've decided that DEI, which is very controversial in the community, would be a key element. I went home after a bunch of these meetings and asked my wife, where was our survey? And she was like, we didn't get a survey. So you know, my I'm a member of this community, okay? Just because my child's not in school doesn't mean that I'm not part of this community and don't have a voice. If you're going to collect our tax money, I'd like to have a voice in this. I think again, you know, it's kind of a little bit half the community chose not to query and ask at all. And when I look at the rest of the people sitting out here, most of them, it looks like you didn't want to hear from them anywhere. You were working. So that, that's really kind of frustrating. One of you mentioned fear. Fear isn't just for people who are minorities or whatever. Again, as Mike Edinger said, fear is about those of us that come up here and don't necessarily buy into the direction you were going and the things you were implementing. And you're automatically considered a racist for being objective. There are so many aspects that have nothing to do with race, that have to do with our children and having fear and having equity. You know, I don't care whether you're the short kid, the fat kid, the smart kid, the kid that does struggles in school. You could be the, you know, there are so many aspects to how kids all need to treat each other that need to be dealt with. I think if you took this in a different context and removed race from the agenda or the issue and said it's about teaching our kids to be kind to each other, I think you'd have a ton of community support. I know you have mine and I feel very different about it. I guess in closing, I just want to say that, you know, while it's great we have a new superintendent on the way and I certainly hope and pray that he comes with no agenda and he comes with an open mind and he comes looking for the community's input and that he brings transparency for a change. I'd love to feel great about that, but it really is true, as Mike said. His job, he's not part of our community. He doesn't live here. He hasn't been here forty years. I'm not looking for him to drive the bus and have a seat in the back. I'd like you all to decide you're going to include everybody out here as part of this community. There's a lot of really smart, bright people that have some great ideas and solutions. And if you incorporate them into this process, I think we can get to an end point that everybody's happy with.
Hello, my name is Nicole Dolan and I'm a community member and current two district stewardess. Throughout pandemic guidance from various health organizations have changed as new data and data gathers. Our school administration and board have evolved their plans on all of those changes. I want to thank you for understanding that new information often leads to new decisions. Based on the DEI mask mandate being lifted and the statements of various organizations at the time, I understand why the health and safety plan was approved on June twenty-eighth. The board used the current information of the time and made new decisions, as it should. Since then, new data has come in and new guidance and new recommendations have been made. The American Academy of Pediatrics recently released updated guidance that all students older than two years and all school staff should wear face masks at school unless medical or developmental conditions prevent it. Lehigh County Community Spreads has continued to sustain this. So I was disappointed that I didn't see a new proposal for the Health and Safety Plan on tonight's agenda. I have heard several board members speak at times passionately about the importance of in-person classes over virtual options when making up show dates. I expected any steps we can take to ensure as many students as possible, attend as many in-person classes as possible, would also be important. I don't think any of us want students that have to miss school days due to being sick or far from home. Please continue to do what you've always done, use new information to make new decisions. I truly don't want to infringe on the rights of others, but I also don't want others to infringe on anyone's children's rights in a safe school environment. Because this is not an issue of individual rights or individual responsibilities. Some people are very skilled drivers and can drive at high speeds with very low risk. But we have speed limits because if they go off an accident, they aren't limited to only injuring themselves. They aren't taking on risks only for themselves. When individual choices affect others, leadership has a societal duty to set standards. At a minimum, our K through six schools should require masking to protect children who do not yet have access to a vaccine. We hold for a fact that those classrooms do not have further community numbers. Data has shown that when two people share a space, even a mask, person has higher chances of transmission when the other person is unmasked. So telling students that they can choose to wear a mask and that's enough is not enough. Thank you.
That concludes our visitor comments. We're going to move on to the board minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of June fourteen, please? Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? An extension? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-eighth, please? Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? An extension? Moving on, go back to the superintendent report for A, the current DEI initiative. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding that? A motion to what, yeah, to, yeah. A motion to discontinue the DEI, yeah. Well, we can just use the recommendation that's on here, please, to discontinue services from Dr. Allen not acting further on the DEI initiative until further recommendations are made by the next superintendent and that the appropriate public input be obtained by the next superintendent before any recommendations are made regarding DEI. Can I have a motion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, everyone could have any more discussion. Sorry, does anyone have anything else they want to add to that? Okay, all those who think, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Liza.
I guess a question, are we going to be taking down the results from the website?
Taking down, you asked about taking down the Dr. Allen's report? Yeah, I think that's part of the
We're not doing it.
Yeah.
Personally, I don't want to be accused of not being transparent because they're not there. But at the same time, I don't think they serve a beneficial purpose to be in there.
We can make that part of the motion? Just add that into that too? It doesn't need to be part of it? Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so, yeah, I need to send, I'm taking it down off of the website. No? Okay. So any other questions for that motion? All those in favor? Opposed? An extension? Do you have a group retainment? Sorry, my computer is not changing. Can I have a motion to approve the following items, number one, U9, as listed on the agenda, please? Questions or concerns about this? Anyone have any questions, concerns? Mr. David, did you look like you turned your microphone on there?
Yep, what are we considering? I'm sorry, one through nine?
The motion to approve the following of one through nine as listed on the agenda. Which also, which doesn't include the, I think you're going to ask about the engagement letter and the live-in motion with recitals?
Yep.
Yeah, that includes that.
Those two things?
Yes.
That list of one through nine?
It's on the, on the agenda if you, oh, you I made this for I don't think it's listed on the, on the, on the recommended agenda, that one.
It's the nine points of the
Yeah. Yes. Along with the other engagement letter and the live-in motion with recitals.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions. I am you know, I'm pleased to see there been a legal group involved. I have conference that that particular law firm has a long experience in dealing with these types of issues. And I expect a good thorough investigation as detailed in both resolutions here and also as part of, you can see a lot of as well with engagement letters, so for the folks that have been, it sounds like people have educated themselves on it. If you haven't done so and have some questions about transparency, which I think is necessary, given, you know, I think it is true what I know the speakers have said tonight, that in many ways, some of these issues, if not all of them, beyond the CRT debate, but just the underlying issues that are going to be investigated by this legal group were raised by members of the community, not by members of the board, myself included. So I take my responsibility for not having identified those issues. And I congratulate and appreciate the role of the community in identifying them for us. I believe that this recital and this investigation is the first step in repairing the relationship with the community in this regard. You know, I, I hope that they see this, and I really do think this is a strong step forward on the part of the board and the school district to give the bottom of what happened. And most importantly, also to train and make sure it doesn't happen again. And in some ways, some of the most concerning issues also deal with the right to know request. The idea that Ms. Naseed, when she came up here, that this information was kept from her. And that, that's deeply troubling to me, and I think it's deeply troubling to every member on the board. I do believe that. And for those reasons, I think employing outside law firm, unconnected to any of this, that has a history of doing these types of investigations and doing them well, is a good step forward. And if you see the steps that they lay out as to what we're going to do in order to remedy this situation, I think it is. And I hope people are impressed by this, I think this was necessary. You won't see this type of thing a lot of board meetings, this type of recital. I would really request that you look into it because it sets out the facts for you. Many of them were provided tonight by school speakers. But this details emails and it details issues. And we don't know what the answers are to them just yet. I'm not saying there's absolute conclusions, that's what the investigation is going to provide. But I think it was requested by French Shiner about getting this out. It's my every expectation that when this investigation is done early, that will be provided to you, the community. So I think that's a good thing. And it's something that I believe is supported by all nine members of this board, and it's the right step forward. I do think at some point we have to I want to see this investigation, I want to get it out to the community. One issue I will say and not understand is our fault. It's my opinion that the board has gotten itself into this position. There is a massive amount of right to know requests coming in. Those do have very, they're impactful on the tax players. I will say that. Now, I think they're completely justified, obviously. I think results of what the vote on in the minute show that they are. I would hope going forward that you would give, that the community would allow us to show good faith back to you that we are dealing with these issues. And to the extent necessary, obviously, you have every right to see whatever information you want to request. But at least understand that there is an impact to the district going forward in cost to deal with that. So I'm all for informed to you. I'm not ready not to be informed and not ask for the information that they can otherwise get. But I would ask that perhaps going forward, as we try to give good faith back to you, that your judicious because they can be costly on this school if it finds, it's something to consider. And I hope you take that the right way. I'm not asking you not to look into our, look into these issues. I think they're important and I think because of you, much has been accomplished and achieved. But it is a consideration as we go forward. So I'm very pleased about that turn of and I look forward to the results of that investigation and I look forward to implementing the suggestions here to make sure that this doesn't happen again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I kind of, not to sum up, but I think for all of us, I think, I won't speak right now, but I will speak for me, but I I think when we do better, we do better, and I think that that's where we are right now. That I think we, you know, things have come to light and we're figuring it out, and I think that moving forward, we will do better. Any other questions or comments?
I'm just going to echo comments from both persons, maybe on the side. I mean, I think the purpose of any investigation is to, you know, identify if there was, you know, anything done improperly, what was done, and more importantly, why to, and then to implement appropriate correct action. So I think that it's absolutely necessary and a step in the right direction.
Okay, can we have a vote on that, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Next is a request for a motion to approve the contract that Pennsylvania Public Health Association conduct compensation analysis and market assessment study by an administrative team. Salary is clear for that at a cost of forty-five hundred dollars. May I have a motion? Questions or concerns, or Captain Missina, do you have anything to add to that?
As, as we talked about, as we engaged with PSBA, this is a study to create salary bands for both the administrative team and the support staff. We typically, with determining ranges in salaries, we take a position like high school principal, for example. And we say, what's an entry level? Does that cost somebody like Southern Lehigh, where other districts that are like Southern Lehigh, in our market value ratio, what's, what's the starting position? And then in the same token, what's the top of the band? What's the highest a principal makes, a high school principal? And then you do that in elementary, middle school, and so on and so forth. So we don't have any salary banding in place, we haven't had it done in a long time. And we're recommending that you get this study as a way to gauge where you are in salaries for your administrators and support staff.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Next is the motion to approve the second reading of revised policy two forty-six, student wellness. Can I have a motion, please? Any questions about that?
I had a question. I'm a little concerned if I understand the new policy or the recommended policy. I'm looking at page page four of the document towards the first full paragraph. It says the wellness, it's going to create a wellness committee that shall serve as an advisory committee regarding student health issues. And in the past, we had that making recommendations to the school board, and that's now regrouped. And then shall be responsible for developing, implementing, and periodically reviewing, updating the school wellness policy that complies with law to recommend to the board for adoption. I just want to make sure that the wellness committee, anything coming out of, and I assume that maybe it was redundant the reason that that word was taken out. I just want to try to clarify that the wellness committee has no authority to in any way implement, adopt, or develop wellness. That they'll simply be under this policy providing their recommendations to the board for full approval. Is that still in place?
Mr. Denny, that's absolutely right. No question what improves all policies.
No question, thank you. I'd ask for clarification.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Moving on to the school calendar, looks like Mr. Ruffey has something to talk to us about. Is that the calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're bringing two options to update the school calendar for the twenty-one point two school year. If you will recall, on May twenty-fourth, we presented the flexible instructional day application that we were going to present to you for approval, it was approved, it was then submitted to PDE. The flexible instruction day application allows us to use up to five days of emergency instruction in the event of an inclement weather, fire, you know, and any number of emergency actions. That was presented on the twenty-fourth. We did receive approval on July twenty-third from PDE that our application was approved. So we would be eligible to use up to five virtual instruction days in replacement. You know, traditionally, what's being happening regionally is would be in placement of a snow day, so you would have instruction on a snow day. However, in conversation with Dr. Musaleen, the conversation that had happened on May twenty-fourth was that that would be left up to the superintendent's discretion. Now that, pending the vote, should he want to decide when we would use a day, it would be given, you know, not a ton of clarification to our community about when days would be used. As a result, we're presenting two options here that provide a significant amount of clarity to what the calendar would look like. Option one, that is listed here in the board documents, would frontload those five flexible instruction days, meaning that the first five emergency days, inclement weather, would be used as remote flexible instruction days. Then, as you can see in our current calendar, we have four days built in. So we would then have four inclement weather days, which would be traditional snow days, for lack of the conversation. And then starting with the tenth day, I know it seems, you know, unusual, but starting with the tenth day, which would be June eighth of twenty twenty-two, we would add days onto the calendar. What this does is it gives finality to that process so people know what to expect. Option two is just the inverse. The first four would be snow days, the traditional sense. The subsequent five, should they be needed, would be flexible instruction days. Same day of June eighth, twenty twenty-two, would be adding days on. So either of these options, you know, I can ask Dr. Musaleen to agree, but these options are up for, like you said, a lot more. Should this be approved, it's much more clear for our community what happens as opposed to a day of decision.
And it's clear for our teachers, it's clear for our staff also, everybody can prepare properly. One of the things I didn't want was having to call on inclement weather day and then the superintendent has to say, oh, well, we're all going to school today. Everybody's going to be angry. Or the superintendent can say, oh, everybody's off today, and you lose the day. So typically, standard operating procedure, you weigh these days out in your calendar. And that's what we're asking. If you want my recommendation, I like the first one. Where the first five days of youth instruction, after that, it's, it's fine. You guys like the second one, it's, it's fine, either one works. But remember, we also have that
The other piece is we did have the federal holiday and state holiday of Juneteenth, which is observed in Pennsylvania on June twenty, twentieth, because of June nineteenth is a Sunday. Pennsylvania observes the following day. That would be an employee holiday, pending that we would add, you know, a significant number of, you know, emergency days worth in because the last day of school currently is June second.
Up to you.
And does the Juneteenth, thank you, I'm sorry, does the Juneteenth option, is that during both options?
Yes.
So it's one and two?
Yes, it is.
That would only affect your twelve-month employees?
So are there, I'm sorry, are there built-ins?
Yeah, so right now, students, the student calendar is one hundred eighty-four days, which according to Pennsylvania is one hundred eight, that's where you get that for the four guaranteed snow days. We provide a requirement where the staff have to be equivalent of those days, the professional development requirements in which they can do through programming that is being offered both at the IU or locally designed programming. That would remain, it's just a matter of what order we would have those days. And to Dr. Musaleen's point, you know, option one preserves the most number of student instructional days, you know, pending the fact that, say, we only have three snow days. In option one, all three of those days are taught remotely, so you would not have any. In option two, if you have three snow days, those days would be done through the Act eighty day process, which they're, they're instructional days, staff's responsible for, but the students would have snow days.
Right, that's, that's why I like option one. You definitely preserve a one hundred and eighty-four day, pretty much student, student engagement engagement at school. If you take option two, it could go down to one hundred eighty, which is the minimum days required as a Commonwealth Pennsylvania. So up to you.
Are we approving, are we taking one of these and approving one right now? Is that the idea?
Yes.
If that, that, my vote is actually for number two, because I like the idea of that's just one of the small joys left in kindergarten is those snow days, so I like for something like that.
And I agree one hundred percent. I think a mental health day, when your snow is on the ground, and hopefully we pause for wind snow is on the ground for a change, that you can go out and decompress and go down a hill on a sled, all for that. I remember them as a kid, I remember them as an adult with my kids, because if we get enough snow, I'm holding it up. So absolutely, option number two.
I completely agree. And I often think that, you know, those remote days and the snow day, there's, I think the likelihood of them being instruction days is not that likely, and I would much prefer to see everybody
Okay. Great. So can I have a motion then to
Can I ask one? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, can I just ask one more quick question? Does this, does either option in any way, and I'm actually in agreement, I'm all about the snow. And I appreciate and understand the value of instruction, I really do. We're all about kids in classrooms and I appreciate you offering your unadulterated opinion as superintendent, I really do. I just like a good old snowball fight, I can get put one in, so. But my only question is, does this in any way impact the current vacation schedule? Look, for instance, I know this calendar was approved and people started planning their vacations around it. I just want to be clear, it's my understanding that it doesn't change anything else, I just want the community to know that this does not impact your vacation plans in any way, right?
That's, that's ultimately the goal here, so you'll notice on here, any date that notice in Act eighty day, the other piece is the goal of providing that end date is that, you know, try not to plan, and that's the universe, try not to plan anything, you know, if you can, starting with June eighth
Right.
should we get there. And I do have, you know, last year, we would have used all ten days, should we
That is, that is going to be my other question, so
So we would have used eleven.
But the year before that, we might not have used any.
This just provides that clarity.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to approve option two as our school district calendar? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Next, on to the threat assessment procedure.
Yes, so attached to the board document here is just an overview of the procedures. So Act eighteen in two thousand nineteen is a school safety bill, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that outlines a number of requirements. There is a policy from PSBA that will be coming ahead, but I would like to get, you know, greater level of detail of that policy with the solicitor. So in lieu of that, I did want to provide just an overview of what the process would look like and provide you an understanding of what we will be using, how we are training, who's on the team, and so on. So you can see here, there's the basic idea of what this process is. This is a required component to go through the threat assessment procedure. It outlines the divergent types of threats and what the process is. So we will use the comprehensive threat assessment guidelines, C-STAT programs, essentially also known as the Virginia model. That is, you know, pretty clearly outlined in the next component. We will also be using this and running our threat assessment process through the navigating three sixty digital threat assessment tool, which is a digital tool. 360 Global Threat Assessment Tool, which is a digital tool, which allows for, you know, comprehensive use amongst the threat assessment team in here. That was a expenditure that was approved in the previous board meeting. That directly correlates to C-STAT, and it provides an opportunity for the members of the team to organize the components, so when, you know, say the threat would come in through a safe-to-safe system, the high school assistant principal, or, you know, middle school assistant principal, bills identify, outline, complete interviews, document things within the system. And that is a program that is being widely used, off the top of my head, you know, we obviously are adopting it, Department of Solutions is adopting it, Bethel Mary's Solutions is adopting it, because there is no other digital program, because we do have to be able to pull data pulls, and this is now a part of the yearly presentation that you all will receive as a result of the Act 44 and Act 18 updates. So you can basically see what the Act 18 has, there are required members within the team, school administration, special education, counseling, school psychology, school health, and so on. Our team, you know, essentially is myself, Mrs. Boothman, Dr. Donahue, Mr. Vicenti, Mrs. Garylo, Mr. Strong, who's a high school psychologist, Mrs. Rich, who's the middle school psychologist, Mrs. Rice, who's the IAS school psychologist, Mrs. Weider, who's the high school nurse, Mrs. Fribe, who's the middle school nurse, Anne Cooper, the middle school counselor, both Officer Laub and Officer Corso, Mr. Kinslow, who's the high school assistant principal, Mr. Hankin, middle school assistant principal, Mrs. Bromiak, or Dr. Bromiak, who's now the Hopewell principal, Mrs. Piasik, high school counseling team, Mrs. Piasik, Mrs. Westbrook, Mrs. Tapanzik, and then the rest of the counselors, Mrs. Cook, Mrs. Denjar, Mrs. Rumi, and then Dr. Stiles, who's the elementary school psych. We will, as you can see in today's agenda for the administrators, there will have to be a number of administrators to go through the process of training. This team of individuals has completed the training in the comprehensive threat assessment guidelines through CLIU 21, and are all completed as of training. We'll have to onboard the new administrators and any new staff, so say people will leave this process, they have to then go through and complete training as well. And then the threat assessment responsibilities within that team are outlined there. It is a very comprehensive process with which we were previously, you know, following in a different manner. So this is a much more team approach, it will be run through the process of, you know, school safety and security coordinator, essentially is the person who oversees that, and the purpose of this is just to provide an outline further for information about this. Hopefully, this procedure document will be placed on the school website, on the Safety and Security tab, which will allow, you know, allow people to go through that. But because this is something that is onboarded for the first day of school, and has to be in place, and the training has been completed, I want to be able to provide an opportunity for people to read this and see that information.
Who is the, who is the school safety and security coordinator?
I am.
So I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say, you know, I think if the people in this community, you know, as safe and secure as they can with their children at schools, knowing this work is helping coordinate this, whether I go along with these, I think Mr. Ruff does an outstanding job, and obviously, the whole team effort, the EMS, all the folks that he just identified as a cool team effort, but really, in a lot of ways, but especially in this one particular area, it stands out as being thorough, if there's anyone who wouldn't be as thorough and detailed in regards to this type of planning, and it's so a crucial force, and yet, in the event that, you know, got to get something to this end, so we're gonna have this information. So I, it's been my experience with Mr. Ruff, that I am always wowed by the arrogance of Southern Lehigh schools with Mr. Ruff, and I think it's largely true to him, I know he pushed on to the other levels of his team, which I'm sure they also deserve a lot of that as well, but I just think you should be pointed out for that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, you're welcome. I did receive that training, and that team worked really hard to go through the training, and we were, we were one of the first schools in Lehigh County to complete that training, and there are some schools that are still working around it, so, you know, we're a good place to be prepared for that.
Thank you.
The next is just a first reading of an electronic signature policy.
Can I have a motion to approve the first reading? Any questions about this? Did you have a brief look at this earlier? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, moving on to H, a motion for the first reading of revised policy 805, emergency preparedness response. I have a motion? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? First reading of the policy, I'm sorry, may I please have a motion to approve the first reading of the policy 805.2, school security personnel? Any questions up there?
I just have one comment. I can raise the question when I first saw this policy, this new policy, there are a series of definitions at the beginning that outline SROs and other security personnel, and so my question was, does this policy in any way impact our current SRO program, the emphasis we place on community relationship building, and not going beyond that, current security detail, and Mr. Ruff very simply explained that the definitions in this policy are required to be there, so that we know the terms we are talking about, what this policy merely addresses the SRO program we currently have, and we value those community relationships, so they know the resource they serve in our community, and our emphasis on social, emotional, and relationship building, but this in no way impacts a change or indirection of that. I just wanted to, I asked that question because that was my initial concern of reading this, and my initial question, I just want to thank Mr. Ruff and the administrative team for addressing it and explaining it to me, so.
Thank you. Any other questions present? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Mr. Ruff, again?
All right, so Dr. Musaleen asked me to present a presentation on the update for the data for the fellow community, so a couple of things we're gonna discuss here is the case data, and as was shared earlier, this is an ever-changing process with case data, so we're gonna present both, some snapshots of the Department of Health and CDC data, some vaccination data, and then updates to state local and federal guidance. So just to be very clear, we do monitor both national, state, and regional data, we do use a combination of databases from the CDC county view, the Pennsylvania Department of Health areas dashboard, and this is just monitored through a routine regional analysis of what's happening with COVID. It is very important, and I've said this in a number of situations in public meetings, without a county health department, we don't have targeted municipal level of that. And I give two examples here, which you can readily Google or search. Bucks County has a municipal dashboard that ties into specific municipal communities. Montgomery Health Department maintains both a municipal and a school district dashboard. So you can see the information in Montgomery County based on school districts, cases for 100,000, broken down by school district boundaries. So these are very specific data sets that no one in Lehigh County has access to, because we don't have a health department. And school districts and organizations have been working together to try to obtain access to that level of data, because that minutia of data is very important, and obviously, it also leads to some information that is just more targeted toward our needs. So when you look at, really, from the end of the school year to last week, where the incident rate for 100,000, and again, this is just a seven-day look back, if you look at the Department of Health, Pennsylvania's viewpoint of this, you can see the trend line that is here, and I really provide a lot of detail on that, you can see where the trend component is, and where that is over the course of that two-month period. When you're looking at this now, at CDC data, you get the top-line graph, is just an example of since Jan. 1st to August 4th, of where that incident rate is, and I think that's important to show the longitudinal, you know, the longitudinal viewpoint of what this looks like over the course of the years since January, and then you can also see in order to read from June till today. The next piece is the other, next, the significant component of determining levels of community spread within COVID, and the way the CDC and the Department of Health do this is at the percent positivity of the PCR test, and same idea, I'm not gonna get into each minutias of each of these, but you can see where the data percentages are on the relative positives within that testing test, and you see the trend line now. Same component, the longitudinal viewpoint from the line graph, January to August 4th and the top line, and then looking at June to that, the next line. You can also then see that the CDC is using a four-stage classification, it's really important to recognize, it kind of speaks to the lineage speakers that spoke to start here, is a constant changing message. So we managed most of the school year last year where the Pennsylvania Department of Health was our, was providing state-specific guidance. What we're hearing out of the Pennsylvania Department of Health and PDE at this point is to follow the CDC guidance, so providing a viewpoint of what the CDC component is, and that's the four levels of transmission here. The CDC breaks it down by counties each week, and the bottom graph is just showing where counties across the country are within those four classification levels. So if you put those together, the CDC community-level transmission is identified, if one of the two classification levels falls into the criteria that is outlined in the top graph here, whether it's low, moderate, substantial, or high. And you can do the breakdown, in each of the incidences, you know, over the course of the criteria, we get out of the first three weeks, so we get to the week of July 2nd, the incident rate for 100,000 is the rate that goes into the next level, so while the PCR positivity rate would remain in certain correct classifications, use the incident rate for 100,000, and you can see based on that trend line, where that is going. Something that is to be, you know, valued and to share is that the CDC updates their guidance daily, the Pennsylvania Department of Health updates their guidance weekly. So, you know, what is on here is a combination, and that's where it gets a little tricky when you look at this, so the incident rate for 100,000 and PCR positivity that is on this chart is from the Pennsylvania COVID early warning dashboard system, it's just easier to explain over the weekly viewpoint, but the CDC level of transmission could change on a day-to-day basis, meaning that on Thursday of last week, Lehigh County moved into the substantial, but the Pennsylvania Department of Health did not make that determination until Friday at 12:00 noon, which is when they dropped their data for the previous seven-day period. The next piece is kind of looking at that, to my point earlier about localizing this data, it is fairly difficult to localize the data for Southern Lehigh School District, and that's because if you look at this map, this is where the zip codes, the local data that's provided is zip code data. There's only one zip code that is completely contiguous within the Southern Lehigh School District, that's 18034. The rest are comprised of multiple different municipalities, and as you can see, there's a component of 1805, 1806, so on and so forth, it's there. So when you're looking at the zip code data, although it tells you, you have to make an approximation based on where the school district is, if you look at that, we just account all of that data, even with that, the data range over the course of the, since January, really looks at about 6% to 10% of the total amount of those cases are attributed within Lehigh County to those zip codes. But as I shared earlier, without a county health department, or, you know, municipal in the cases that have municipal health department, you cannot get that global, true local picture in this county.
Mr. Ruff?
Yes?
I thought, I found that really helpful, 80s max in the zip code. I was trying to understand, I think on the, yeah, on that one right there, the last bullet there, you have generally the Southern Lehigh explosive zip code data, has accounted for a range of approximately 6% to 10% of the total reported COVID-19 cases in Lehigh County.
Yeah.
Now, when I look at the zip codes, that, were you, were you taking into account the total cases in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 zip codes?
Correct.
Okay. And I, and I also understand, for me, I think, and I know we need to make some decisions on this at some point in the future, it would be helpful, just to critique a little bit, I would like to see, for instance, 18103 is Allentown.
Okay.
And that runs along our border.
East Rock Road, there's some houses on the East Rock Road that come here, but they're very small.
Right, but yeah, they have five, that's bigger zip code, I looked it up, they have five thousand cases.
18103, I did not include.
Okay, great. That's helpful to know. Yeah, I mean, my thought would be, like you said, I wish we had a county health bureau, we don't have one, I do think it's somewhat instructive to try to get this down to the municipality, I think maybe one way, 18034 and 18036, I think if you're from this area, you look at those two, I think we, most of us would agree, looking at that, if you extrapolate that out a little bit, I think that would give you the flavor of what's going on in Upper Sauk, and I think from my rough data would show that, you know, probably below that 6 to 10, where currently, maybe I'm wrong, but, and I'm not trying to deem it, I honestly believe that those two, if you looked at that and sort of, again, if you're from this area, I think if you look just that back, you can see that would cover all of Upper Sauk and half of Little Milton, probably the half of Little Milton is the people in. And so, and so, and I'm jealous of that other half of Little Milton, I wish I'd looked out there, but I just think that might be helpful with my decision-making in the future, I didn't know if there was a possibility that you could do that, I don't want to throw our board off, but to me, that would be a little bit more helpful number going forward. And I had one other, and from, oh, the other, the other data point that maybe I missed it, that I would like to have in future updates, that's a little bit more persuasive to me at least, is hospitalization and deaths beyond just the cases, which my understanding is, well, I would just be, I'd be, I'd be interested to know what the hospitalization and deaths are in Lehigh County, and again, we have to really extrapolate that to those.
I don't think there are any deaths in that county since mid-year.
No, it's a lagging, I also understand it's certainly a lag in the game, but maybe by the time we decide on this, we'd have some information about that. Those are some information that I would at least find helpful, I don't want to direct you, but others supply that information helpful as well. Those are just two critiques, I appreciate.
Those are easily available.
Thank you.
Just to add on to that, I agree, I would be, you know, I would be different in the realm, I think before about, I know we have some data in the presentation coming up with respect to vaccination numbers by age group, I think it would be helpful too, if we could have a better understanding of vaccination, how do you know the percentages in those two zip codes in particular?
The one thing I can say is that myself, a concerted effort amongst school leaders in the county, we have put a lot of pressure on a number of people, because the data exists in Lehigh County, and you could ask, I'm sure you, you know, I don't think, I don't think you'd be able to find it, even in your position, but it's a part of the, my understanding is that prior to dispatching police or ambulance, or other emergency to a residence, they have data on that individual if they have had COVID positivity within a certain period of time. However, Lehigh County EMS is not able to share that data, because there's no health department. So, you know, we've been speaking with Senator Brown's office, you know, the county commissioner, several people in the county office, you know, we have to deal with the Department of Health, and when we work, we reach out to the other departments of health, that's where they're getting that information. It takes, the data's there, but it takes, you know, you have to take care of the data over the course of time, so you have to make sure that you're taking out people who are non-positive, putting people in that are, so because it's not the health bureau, it's not, so I even, I met with the GIS office through email, just through phone call, and they have the data, they just can't give it because it's not the health department.
So you proved my point earlier about your thoroughness, and I appreciate that. That's good to know, and I think it would be important for folks that are attending here tonight, that's important data that I think school leaders could use, and decision-makers would rely on, like myself, and the extent that, again, folks can be involved, not just in the school, but also with their local government, that you started with, Mr. Ruff said, that the extent that people can provide us that data, and decision-makers at this level can make better informed decisions about the risks involved, which is what all of us are trying to understand, and the way, and very important decisions, so I appreciate you trying to give that information, and the extent that other folks can continue to advocate for their elected officials to help us with that information, I think it would be great. Thank you.
Jeff, I actually agree with your, your zip code idea with the 18034, the 18036, I would throw 18092 if I have a good memory, but like, you have 18015, that's like back in the hills, there's a tiny little bit that's Southern Lehigh, but that's all, that's in back in the hills. Even the 18049, that's Mayes. I would agree with Jeff's rationale behind the trying to narrow in to where the bulk of our population lies.
I apologize, I, Dr. Shrean, if you included this or not, but the request for any information available on vaccination rate, did it broken down by age group, was that included in your?
So, what I had.
I miss it, if that's possible.
So the next slide is vaccination by age group.
Okay, thanks.
So again, all plus individuals are eligible, vaccine eligibility is high in the region. When you look at it again, there's two separate databases to consult here, the Department of Health database is updated weekly. to consult here. Uh, the Department of Health's database is updated weekly. Um, you can see the breakdown of the, of the groups. Now, the groupings here are the groupings that the Department of Health provides us. So when we talk about 10 to 14 group, um, you know, you have a partially covered group of individuals with one dose versus individuals with two doses. Um, so you have 934 individuals in the 10 to 14 group, um, and 4,606 in the 10 to 4 group that's fully vaccinated. And the partial 15 to 19 is 15, is 1,530. And the fully covered is 10,653. Now, if you look at that by population, uh, percentage, um, you can glean that, but again, it's, it's a, uh, you, they don't provide that information by zip code or by, not by anything like that. But I can say that the total, uh, percent of the 10 to 14 classification with at least one dose in Lehigh County, um, as of Sunday was 24.4% of that population, according to the Department of Health in Pennsylvania. And that's 4.3% partially vaccinated and 20.1% fully vaccinated.
Is that truly including 10-year-olds?
No, that's the data classification that the Department of Health uses.
So is that percentage reflective of that data? Okay. And if I understand, 10-year-olds can't be vaccinated. I'm sorry, I raised that question poorly. Is that percentage indicative, that 24% of the population, for instance, indicative of the fact that it's including the population?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, that was my question. So that.
I honestly don't know the answer to that, but I would assume.
Um, thanks. That was my question.
And the 15 to 19-year-old is, uh, the total with one dose for Lehigh County is 51%. Um, that's 6.7% partially, um, 44.3% fully. And that's as of Sunday. And when you look at the CDC's document on this, the CDC's updated it daily. Um, so you can see that in Lehigh County to the point that I looked earlier, um, the total percent of the population who is eligible to receive a vaccine, which 260 as of Sunday, as of Thursday, this, this images, um, was 70.5% um, of the population. And then they break that down, people who are over 12 years old, over 18 years old, um, so on. So then when you look at the local, how the guidance has changed from the federal, state to the local level, obviously the CDC on July 27th provided the guidance that's been stated during the COVID coming period that they're recommending, um, universal mask for teachers, staff, students and visitors to schools, uh, regardless of vaccination status.
Like my kids, other kids are, are affected. And again, I know it was brought up about, you know, being brought home. I am personally speaking of a parent who could die from it because I am immune of compromise. So please just consider all of the children, um, and look at the well-being of all the children. I please strongly urge you to please make masks optional. The parents know what's best for the children. It's not, no offense, it's not the school board, it's not the doctors, it's not the local government. The parents know what is best for their children. Again, please, I, I strongly urge you to make masks optional. Thank you.
Next is Karen Markham.
Good evening. I'm not sure if you can answer this, but I just wanted clarification on, um, the IT. You did a whole lot of risks and everything. Is that going to be added to the Southern Lee High School, but if you're out, if the young.
It's on the board docs.
It's on the board docs. It's not going to be like, hey, today we're applying.
Oh.
And did something like that. I would request that not after the, the sophomore talked, you know, she's really nervous about spreading the disease. And I don't think 16-year-olds need to, shouldn't be worried about that. They have other things in school to be worried about. But they're checking the website every day to see if it's yellow or red or orange or green. I think that's a little more for the adults, for the parents.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Karen Gutman? Okay. Uh, Mr. Paul Devoe?
I just want to follow a little bit further on the masking, although I appreciate that you did not implement any mask mandates this evening. Still, so having, uh, definitive steps to guarantee that masking will be optional this year. I did not report that in lack of Lehigh County data, that school board meeting was this evening at Hope White Hall and the East End School District. Their school board was both voting to make masking optional for you. Thank you.
That concludes our visitor comments. We do not have a need for executive session after. And, um, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thank you.